Stand for Pledge Allegiance, Jeff?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome you all to the March 5th, 2013 Commission Meeting. I want to start out by just welcoming, and everybody knows almost, Kirsten Kapperman. He started yesterday as our Chief Civil Deputy State's Attorney, and so welcome officially to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then I, oh, did you want to speak?
No, not at all. I'm speechless. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. I'll remind you to silence your cellphones and that our meeting documents are in the folder next to Commissioner Kelly if you would like to see anything that we are looking at on our iPads. Also, I'll remind you that we do have listening devices for the hearing impaired which are available through Robert if needed. And then with that, we will move on. Cindy?
Routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to nothing.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of February 26, 2013.
Pay the bills with a comment.
Hope we're not on bills yet.
Oh, sorry.
We're on minutes, sorry. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from last week?
I'll do the minutes.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
I'll second the bills.
All those in favor, excuse me. Motion passes four to nothing. Now on to the bills. We have a motion. Do we have a second? And we have a second. Any comments on the bills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, on today's bills, there were 160 individual bills on mental health care. That did not include $7,500 psych evaluation under court services. I would also say that there's $32,000 which was a pass-through on a grant to Southeast Tech. That makes our bills look a little higher than they are, but that mental health issue is certainly a large component of our weekly bills.
On a weekly basis, you were right. Any other comments on the bills? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to nothing.
There are no reports today. Item five is personnel. A is to approve the routine action.
Carrie Dever. We have a motion to approve the routine action, or Carrie, do you have a comment?
No comment on the routine action.
Okay. Motion on the routine action?
So moved.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Do we have all four ayes here? Aye?
Aye.
Four to nothing.
Item B is to recognize significant employee anniversaries for March 2013.
Carrie Dever?
Carrie Dever.
Good morning. We have four employees celebrating anniversary, significant anniversaries in March. We have John Holman who's a correction system operator at the jail, Janet Buckley who's a senior county technician at the jail, and then we also have Laurie Stalen who's a statistician in equalization, and Laurie is here today.
Laurie, could you stand?
So a quick round of applause for Laurie who's celebrating 20 years of service. And then we also have Cheryl Olson who's an administrative records specialist at the Register of Deeds who's celebrating 35 years today. Wow. I mean, we'll get those 10, 15 years, but the 20, 25, 30, and 35 years are definitely special. So, thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you very much for your dedication to the county. Thanks for coming and showing your faces since we don't see you on a daily basis. So, thank you very much.
Item C is to recognize volunteers in county government for February 2013. Carrie Dever?
Volunteers had over 125 volunteers again last month in several areas throughout county, so we want to make sure to recognize them and thank them for their service.
Yeah, and we do want to thank the volunteers on a monthly basis because without them our costs would be much, much higher to the taxpayers, so we really appreciate their service. Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you.
The next item is application for abatement. Pam Nelson, I believe this is yours?
Yep.
Are they all mine?
Just one. It's just an elderly freeze?
I can't even find it on my agenda.
Okay, so any comments? Have a motion?
Do you want me to read it?
Yep, maybe I should read it.
It's for Donald Lundgren, ID 74748. It's an assessment freeze on the 2012 property taxes in the amount of $693.26.
Move approval. Say it.
Any comments? Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to nothing. Thank you.
Thanks, Pam. There are no notices and requests today. Item A is planning and zoning notices. First reading and authorize county auditor to publish notice of hearing to consider amendments to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County. Pat Herman.
Good morning. Pat Herman from Minnehaha County Planning. This is a request to do a text amendment to our zoning ordinance, our 1990 zoning ordinance. We have several large dairies in the community that employ migrant workers during the year, and they are charged with federal law to house those employees. And in the rural area, it's pretty hard to find available housing, especially that meets the codes for federal housing. And so they are asking to amend the ordinance to allow in the agricultural district workforce housing, which would be up to 20 people housed in a building. It would use a rural building eligibility, so they wouldn't be gaining eligibility this way. So they're asking to add that to the A1 district and then add three definitions: workforce housing, agricultural employer, and migrant and seasonal agricultural worker. This was before the planning commission on February 25. Comes to you with a unanimous recommendation of approval. So today, action would be to authorize the auditor to publish notice. Would be a public hearing on March 19 at 9:20 a.m. to consider these amendments.
So we need a motion to publish the hearing.
So moved. Second.
Any comments? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
There are no petition for compromise of lien. The next item is opportunity for public comment.
This is the time when if you have something that you would like to speak to the commission about that is not on our regular agenda, that you would come forward and speak. So is there anyone with a public comment? Seeing none, we will move on. Item number 10.
Under regular business is authorize the chairman to sign the second renewal of the inmate healthcare services agreement between Minnehaha County and Correct Care Solutions LLC. Michelle Boyd.
Good morning. Michelle Boyd with the sheriff's office. Back in front of you today to make the same request as last week is to ask your consideration and approval to sign the second one-year contract renewal for the 2013 inmate medical care contract with the jail and CCS. As we discussed last week, we contract with CCS for our inmate medical care, and the current contract expired December 31 of 2012. We've budgeted for the amount of $1,385,262 for inmate medical care for CCS to provide that for us for this current year, and so I'm here to make that request.
Can we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Madam Chair, I recognize that we've had some issues with CCS, but none of them have been in the jail, and I know that the system that we had before was a bit cobbled together and without any accountability, well, not any accountability, but we had different vendors performing different functions, and getting them all in the same room to have, discuss an issue was difficult. And so I think that our current system of having a single provider has benefited us, and I'm going to support the motion I made.
Additional comments?
I may comment, as I too will be supporting this. We have talked with the people in the sheriff's office, and they're very comfortable with what they have. We have had no problems with them, and seems to be moving very smoothly over there, and also it has saved the county a lot of money. And so for that reason, I will be supporting this motion. Any additional comments?
Okay. For a motion? I mean, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero. Thanks.
Item 11 is consider a motion to issue a proclamation declaring March 12 through the 13th, 2013 as Sioux Empire Water Festival Days. Casey McDaniel.
Good morning, Casey.
Good morning, Commissioners. Casey McDaniel, Minnehaha County 4-H Office. I have been given the opportunity to help serve on the Sioux Empire Water Festival Committee this year, and I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. It says, "Whereas the Sioux, Big Sioux Aquifer, underlies approximately 1,000 square miles and together with the Big Sioux River provides water to communities in southeastern South Dakota, and whereas providing 2,500 4th grade children from 100 classes in 50 southeastern South Dakota schools with information about the protection and preservation of water, our most valuable resource will help children make educated decisions concerning water in the future. And whereas this education is accomplished with the help of 100-plus volunteers from federal, state, county, and city governments, and from private businesses, and whereas this is the 20th annual event, and whereas the county commission recognizes the long-term benefits of this type of education and supports such educational efforts. Now therefore, we, the Minnehaha County Commission, do hereby proclaim March 12th and 13th, 2013 as Sioux Empire Water Festival Days in Minnehaha County."
Thank you, Casey. Can you tell me how many years they've been doing this?
This is the 20th annual, so it's a big deal. They're trying to make a big push. We actually have an increase in number of students that are coming from last year, and we're excited to have the event.
And the county commission has always been very supportive of education in our communities, so thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you all.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same pose. Same. Motion passes four to zero.
Item 12 is consider a motion to issue the annual St. Patrick's Day proclamation for Ominnehaha County. Ken McFarlane.
Here we go again, Kelly.
Well, one of the fun things that the commission gets to do on an annual basis is to issue the St. Patrick's Day proclamation for Minnehaha County. As you know, St. Patrick's Day is on Saturday, March 16, and that's when the parade is going to be held at 2:00.
Parade, not St. Patrick's Day.
Well, no, but the parade is on, at March 16 at 2:00 p.m. One of the things too is they would like the chair or a representative of the commission to read this proclamation at 11:45 on the corner of Knight and Phillips when they paint the shamrock. So as you know, the St. Patrick's Day parade is a pretty big event in our community. And just as a personal aside, my son's band, Snake Beer Jackson, is also going to be playing on St. Patrick's Day festivities downtown, so come and see them. If you want, I will go ahead and read the proclamation.
I think that would be appropriate. Thank you.
Whereas, "We be Irishmen and women all of this day of national celebration at home in Ireland and in homelands throughout the world, and whereas the joyous unity of St. Patrick's Day reminds us of, reminds us all of our shared heritage and membership in a global family, and whereas today we honor the patron saint of Ireland of his great message of love and peace to one another, and whereas celebrations are in order for an expression of culture and heritage in music, dance, poetry, and games, and just a wee bit of green beer raised in a toast, and whereas green silliness abounds as you shed your troubles by the road for a chance of good cheer in a wearin' of the green. And then this we proclaim as leprechauns are dancing and the joy that's everywhere with luck in your, with luck as your companion. From deep in our hearts, we treasure our strong community spirit and tradition of welcome and care for one another, and thank God for the Irish who gave us St. Pat to bring us together, a-wearing a green hat, then shouting proclaim for the world, for the whole world is Irish on the 17th of March dated this 5th of the merry month of March 2013, signed by the Minnehaha County Commissioners all Gerald O. Benenga, Cindy O. Heiburger, Jeff O. Barth, Dick O. Kelly, and John O. Pecus."
Thank you, Ken. Can we have a motion for the proclamation?
Yes.
I'll make a motion for the Irish.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero. Thank you, Ken.
Item 13 is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and the South Dakota Department of Transportation for inspection of precast concrete beams for the Baltic Bridge project. D.J. Boothby.
Good morning, Commissioners. D.J. Boothby, Highway Superintendent. This agreement is with the Department of Transportation, so they can provide onsite inspection during the construction of our beams for the Baltic Bridge. It's occurring at Gage Brothers in Sioux Falls, and they have, typically have a staff person that works out of the Gage Brothers plant in order to do inspections on the beams for their projects. And so it makes sense for us to hire the state rather than a private consulting firm for this work. The estimated cost is $15,000, and I can answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for D.J.?
I'll make the motion.
Motion? Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero. Thank you, D.J.
Item 14 is a presentation of Minnehaha County Highway Department's FY 2013 Construction Project Schedule. D.J. Boothby.
Good. Can you guys see the presentation down here?
Yep.
Okay, great. Good morning, again, Commissioners. Here's our 2013 update on our construction projects. The purpose of this presentation is to provide an update of our construction projects, what we have budgeted and what we plan on doing this year. Because most construction plans change, we've also included an update on our budget and what we are projecting for expenses and that type of thing. I want to stress that this is not any type of formal request to modify our budget, and the projects that are listed, some of them are projects that were not approved in the original budget, approved in September, but these are projects that we've identified that could be, that could take place this year, and the projects that are not on the current approved budget, they would come to the commission separately for approval before any action, or before any expenses were incurred on those projects. We've been very busy in the highway department, doing a lot of work. I was out basically all last weekend, some training on bridge maintenance, and so this presentation had to be put together at home. I'm not telling you that because I work a lot. I'm telling you that because my son helped me with this presentation. My son is in second grade. He's awesome, and he has some great input on the work that I do. I thought I would take the opportunity to work on a PowerPoint together and see if I could teach him something about engineering or computers or something, just a little teachable moment. He told me that, well, it basically consisted of great company. He told me that I needed to add more pictures and that I needed to make it more awesome. So, here we go. 2013, we've set some goals for our construction projects. First, we, as a result of a lot of our bridge inspections last year, we have some immediate safety concerns on our, on our bridge system, and those are reflected on eight bridges that we've decided that we want to replace immediately, and so we've got those in the budget. And then also, we want to not only increase the immediate safety concerns, but we want to rehabilitate projects, or rehabilitate bridges, and that's going to just bring the condition of our overall system up. We've identified five bridges that we want to do rehabilitation projects on. And I hope you can see these pictures okay. This is an example of what a rehabilitation will do. That picture right there, on the right-hand side, shows a concrete bridge deck, and on the left-hand side, you can see the approach roadway, which is a gravel surfacing. The center there is a strip of metal, and we call that a finger joint. That's just a joint that interlocks like your fingers if you were holding your hands together, and it allows for the bridge to move back and forth with contraction and expansion for different temperatures. And as you can imagine, with, if you hold your hands together with your fingers, you can see there's gaps in there, and those gaps on a bridge joint like that will allow gravel and other debris, water and things to move down and go down through those cracks underneath the bridge. And this particular bridge, you can see that huge gravel pile under there. I think it was up to 10 loads of gravel that our crews took out last fall when they removed the gravel from underneath the bridge. You might think, you know, that's not that big of a deal. You just get in there, take out the gravel, and you're done. But if you look a little bit closer, that gravel up against the beams, you can see how it retains all that water, and you can't even see the bad damage there where the gravel is still up against the beams. Water and metal, they don't mix, and so you can see how it's rusted out quite a bit. Moving on, we have 347 miles of pavement in the county that is on the county highway system. We want to rehabilitate 19 miles of that this year through several different projects, and that's just to, again, bring the condition of our, of our road system up. We want to do that utilizing new technologies. Ultimately, we want to maximize our return on investment. There's two types of projects that are listed there, the asphalt micro-surfacing and the asphalt full-depth recycling. Those both are new to us as a county, but they're widely used throughout the United States and the world as, as a rehabilitation tools that are cheaper than, than the alternatives that we've traditionally used here. And ultimately, we just want to enhance the quality and the public perception of our county highway system. This is a graph here. We call it a degradation curve, and this is for a bridge. If you want, don't worry about reading the words right now. Just look at the general shape of the curve, and I'll explain the graph, what it, what it means. The y-axis, the vertical axis, is the condition of a bridge, and then the x-axis is the time, the time in years. And you can see generally, I don't know if you can see the mouse or not? Yeah, that does show up. Okay, good. At time equals zero, when a bridge is first constructed, the condition of a bridge is 100% will say, and, and over time, I think I lost my mouse. Oh, there we go. Over time, that will come down, and the condition of the bridge, let's just say in 20 years, the condition of a bridge will drop 40%, and so you'll, your condition of your bridge is 60% of what it was originally when you constructed it. And at that time, let's do a rehabilitation project and, and try to get that back up to, let's say, 95% of the original construction. We're not going to get it back up to 100%, but if we do a project, we can probably get it up to 95%. And for the purposes of our discussions, let's say that, that costs maybe $100,000, just so we can have some numbers to talk about. What you're actually going to be doing then is resetting your degradation curve, and so you're bringing that, the quality or the condition of the bridge back up to 95%, and then it will continue on through time to, to lose some of its condition. And now let's say for, for whatever reason, maybe the commission wanted to save some money, maybe the highway superintendent was sleeping on the job, and you decided to wait a few years, and you didn't do that project after 20 years, and maybe you waited until 25 years. And so that's where that blue line comes in, and you can see on your degradation curve that it's really steep, and it's almost a vertical curve, so you're losing a lot of condition in those years after you've decided to wait. And so you can still do that rehabilitation project, and you can get that back up to, let's say, 95%, but now instead of spending $100,000, if you wait just a couple more years, you're spending, here in this example, five times as much more money just to get it back up to that 95%. So your small $100,000 rehabilitation project now turned into a $500,000 rehabilitation project, and you only gained a couple years of service. And so if you compare both of those degradation curves, you can see how it translated off to the right just a couple years, but like I said, you're, you're spending five times as much more money because you missed that opportune time when that maintenance was really key. So this is a really important graph. I want you to keep this in mind as we go through our presentation. The original project list, that's what you have shown here. This should look somewhat familiar. It might be, not be very legible with the small print, but we'll go through it here. This is what was presented in our approved budget in September, our original project list. And just to summarize a few things, the total amount of money we're trying to budget for spending on, on federal projects and, or on, on our projects, and the funding that was going to come from federal or state funds was $1.6 million. That was really high because we were estimating that we're going to have a full replacement on the Baltic Bridge and a full replacement on the Ellis Bridge. And as you know, since then, we've just decided that the substructures or parts of those substructures are in good enough shape where we're able to maintain some of those systems, and we're not having to replace the entire project, or the entire bridges. On our original budget, we're looking at spending about $5.9 million out of the highway fund, and then most importantly, I think on this slide, you can see our total contracted construction budget was around $7.5 million. This is that same table, and, and what I've done here since September, we've, we've adjusted the numbers for those bridge projects because we've got those in through design, and we've, we've made the, the changes that we're not going to replace the entire structure. We're going to keep a lot of that substructure, so we've, we've changed the construction numbers on two of those big bridges. And then highlighted in yellow are those additional maintenance projects that I was talking about earlier on, where we've identified them. We really feel strongly that they, that they should be done if we want to keep ahead of the curve, degradation curve. But again, these are not projects that have been approved by the commission at all, and this is the first time that you're seeing most of these. Some things to note on this slide, the savings that we've, that we've realized from, from those bridge designs being changed in scope are $1.72 million. The additional projects highlighted in yellow, they add up to be about $1.9 million. And so our, our, our total project contracted, contracted cost is just over $7.5 million, almost $7.6 million, so it's an increase of $88,000. At the stage of where these projects are at and how much time has been spent in, in a pre-designed period, there is a high level of contingency on, on most all of these projects. And so when there's a high level of contingency, we don't really know an exact, an exact cost of that $7.6 million. It could realistically be $7.5 million. It could be $7.7 million. We just don't know. So that, the idea is that $88,000, it's basically a wash compared to what our original budget was. That's, that's the main point there. The big changes are the federal-state funding, where we're not requesting all that state aid from the state because of those bridge project changes. We're losing essentially $592,000 in state aid, and so that difference needs to be made up somewhere, and that comes out of the highway fund, an additional $670,000 out of the highway fund. If every one of those projects came in as estimated and the, and the commission approved every one of those projects. And like I said before, I just want to stress again that each one of these projects, before any money is spent on them, they would come to the commission for some type of approval because, because they were not originally in our budget. Again, I just want to show you this degradation curve and, and remind you the cost of delayed maintenance. If we decided to do a lot of these projects in future years, we could be missing out on that opportune time to do our maintenance. I want to talk a little bit about the budget because we're adding so much money to a projected budget, it should be, it should be such that we take a look at what we have budgeted, what we have budgeted for revenues and expenses, and, and I want to compare some numbers from last year. This is a summary of our 2012 revenue. The middle column there is our 2012 budget, what we had budgeted for revenue, and you can see in the right-hand column, the 2012 actual. And these are numbers that were just recently compiled after what we call our 13th month. The green cells there, those are numbers that came in higher than what we had budgeted, and the red numbers there, those are numbers that came in lower than what we had budgeted. The increase is largely due to increased motor vehicle fees and additional port-of-entry fees that we received from the state. In, in total, we received about $731,000 more than we had estimated in revenue in 2012. And, and once we started looking at that, we thought we should probably look at what we have for 2013 estimates for revenue, and so that's what we did there. We, we compared what we have for our 2013 budget compared to what our 2012 actual budget was, and we made a couple modifications to our, to our 2013 projections. We modified that port-of-entry and the motor vehicle fees, and then we also modified our STP funds because there was a small change in, in those. And coincidentally, the, the federal government passed the MAP-21 Federal Transportation Highway Bill, and that resulted in a decrease of our, of our federal funding. So ultimately, here, we had an additional $350,000 that we were projecting in revenue, and this, I would still say, is very, very conservative. We are minimizing the amount of increase of our projected revenues because we don't want to increase the projection so far that we actually come in lower than that. So this is a review of our 2012 expenditures now, what we actually spent compared to what we had budgeted. 2012 was a very strange year. We had an overall savings of about 13% just due to personnel services. Most of this is because we had some open positions, and we had a lot of reduced overtime. We received some very favorable bids in 2012, and we had very few change orders or additional Most of this is because we had some open positions, and we had a lot of reduced overtime. We received some very favorable bids in 2012, and we had very few change orders or additional expenses with our contracted construction. The majority of the savings ultimately was due to two seasons of very favorable winter weather. We didn't have a whole bunch of fuel expenses or material expenses for salt or sand. We had very low overtime, and that, that's basically because we had unseasonably warm weather with not a lot of moisture. So, we essentially saved $1.36 million less than what we had budgeted for 2012. Then, we looked at our, our 2013 budget, what we have budgeted for expenses. We updated a couple of those numbers, the contracted construction and, and the STP funding, based on our project list that I had presented to you earlier. And again, here, you can see that we just have about an $88,000 increase. And like I said, it's basically due to the contracted construction update and the STP fund update. This is where the rubber hits the road, no pun intended. This graph shows the trend over the last three years of what our highway fund balance looks like. You can see there's a general trend of how our revenues come in, and then we spend money on construction, and it kind of comes back down. And, and it looks like over the last three years, we, we did a fairly good job of, of ending the year about where we had started the year. And there was a push there the last couple of years to spend a little bit more than we had received in revenue to get that highway fund balance down to more of a reasonable level. And you can see the, the middle line, or the, the blue line there on the graph, is 2012. I've adjusted that last month to account for about $950,000 of carryover projects that we still are going to expend funds on, but we've already got contracts and things in the works. And so, that does end where, where it should mathematically. And then, so what we did there, we, we took the, the trend line that was developed off of these graphs, and we inputted our 2013 estimated revenues and estimated expenses for our projects. And we came up with what our 2013 budget should look like, or highway fund balance should look like. And you can see at the end of the year, we're ending with our highway fund balance just over $2 million. And, and that's a lot closer than, or a lot more in the neighborhood of, of where we've discussed we want to be at the end of the year, in between that $2, $2.5, $3 million. And this is with a whole bunch of extra work that, like I said, hasn't been budgeted before, hasn't been approved. But if we were to complete these projects, just giving you an idea of where we would be ending that year in. This is a construction map that you've all seen quite a few times, and I hope you can see the colors. They show up a little bit faint in some areas. But overall, you can just tell that there's a whole bunch of projects all over the county. We're very busy. We have a lot of things planned. And what that means is we're all going to be very busy answering phone calls all summer long if all these projects get approved. There's going to be lots of people that are concerned about what way they should take, what, how long projects are going to close down the roads for, and that type of thing. These are my boys. That's Grant in the red coat. He's the one that helped me with the pictures and the presentation. And like I said, he wanted to add pictures, and he wanted to make it awesome. He also thought that the county commission needed a pep talk because there's a whole bunch of construction that we're hoping to get done this year. I'm pretty sure that this is, I'm pretty sure that this is the first time that this has ever happened at a county commission meeting. So, sit down, fasten your seat belts. It's time for a pep talk.
The world needs you. Stop being boring.
Yeah.
Boring is easy. Everybody can be boring.
But you're gooder than that.
Life is not game, people.
Life isn't a cereal either.
Well, it is a cereal.
And if life is a game, aren't we on the same team?
I mean, really, right?
I'm on your team.
You're on my team.
This is nice, people.
You got air coming through your nose.
You got hot people.
That means it's time to do something.
Two roads diverged in the woods, and I took the road less traveled.
It hurt, man!
You look bad.
Rocks, storms, and glass.
The pipe is broke.
Wah!
Not cool, Robert Frost.
But what if there were more to pass?
I won't get in the one that leads to awesome.
It's like that dude Jordan said, "Don't stop believing."
Bless your dreams, you better.
Then you should get a better dream.
Bring that salad, girls.
Get a better dream and keep going, keep going, keep going, and keep going.
What if Michael Jordan had quit?
Well, he did quit.
But he retired.
Yeah, yeah.
He retired.
But before that, in high school, what if he quit when he didn't make the team?
Who would have never made Space Jam?
I don't know Space Jam.
What would be your Space Jam?
What would you recreate would make the world awesome?
Nothing if you keep sitting there.
That's why I'm talking to you today.
This is your time.
This is my time.
It's our time.
We can make every day better for each other.
If we're all in the same team, let's start acting like it.
We got work to do.
We can crawl out, or we can dance about.
We were made to be awesome.
I've seen that. That's cool.
And if you don't know the history behind that, you should look it up. It's a very good story.
Yeah, kidpresident.com. He was on the news, I think CBS News again last night, kind of sweeping the nation. Pretty cool story. Kid President says, "We can make every day better for each other. Commissioners, we have the funds. We're ready to do the work, and I think that we should go make our roads awesome." So, if you have any questions right now, I can answer them. And, and if not, look forward to some future requests for additional funds and additional projects.
Any comments?
Adam Chair.
A couple of questions, DJ.
Yep.
That picture, that first picture, when you started out the presentation, was that taken from any of that county?
No, that was a file photo. It's from Microsoft.
I was looking, I was trying to figure out where to go to see that site.
Yeah.
And the other one is, can you explain what micro-surfacing is?
Micro-surfacing is when you go over a road and you input a whole bunch of oil and then a little bit of asphalt. And what you're doing is, is basically sealing and putting a little bit of a riding course on the road, not as much as you would on an overlay project. But you're, you're resurfacing just a very thin layer, and you're putting a lot of oil in there to seal up the pavement. Water makes pavement deteriorate very quickly. And so, over the years, you want to seal it up and keep it watertight. So, that's what, in general terms, that's what a micro-surfacing does.
Good. One more, if I may. We'd kind of had, or set a comfort level on the balance. Was it 2 to 3 million? Was that the number we came up with?
Yes. And in addition to this, what would be projected, about a $2 million cash balance on our highway fund? We still have 2 to 2.5 million of STP balance. And that, that's not necessarily readily available as, as cash on hand, but it is a fund that's, that's specifically for Minnehaha County that the state oversees.
Commissioner Barth.
DJ, is the, our state and federal aid in jeopardy with this sequester issue?
Not that I'm aware of.
If I may.
The funds, the funds that we have received, like the STP balance that I keep discussing, that's already in, in an account in peer.
I also have a question about the technology. What is a low slump overlay?
A low slump overlay is a, a concrete that is a thick concrete that has a lot of sand aggregate, not a lot of rock aggregate. And, and it just provides a new surface course again on a, on a concrete bridge deck.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think you can tell your son, lots of pictures, pretty awesome.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, DJ.
Item 15 is an update and status report of the 88th legislative session on bills that impact Minnehaha County, Robert Wilson.
Between DJ and his boys and Kid President, that's a bit of a tough act to follow when I'm giving you the updated update. Not the least of which is also because we're, again, talking about a number of bills here that I've brought to your attention previously. As I've told you before, a lot of the bills that we were looking at really were dealt with early on in the legislative session. And as we get down here to the last few days, I'm really going to be recapping a couple of bills that we've already talked about, and just their latest, the latest stage in the process. And beyond that, if you have some questions on these or other bills, please, please ask me. 1085, House Bill 1085, an act to revise certain provisions concerning the notice given to municipalities and counties for bingo games and lotteries. It's one I brought to your attention last week that just said simply, rather than noting these games, that charities or other, other fundraisers that come forward, and currently the, there's a notice that's formally listed on the agenda that if, if passed, that could, a designated administrative official could be identified in those notices provided to that person. That bill has now passed through Senate local government, and its final stage would be a consideration on the Senate floor. Again, another one that, that we already had talked about, House Bill 1115, an act to clarify the deliberative process, exempting certain open meetings provisions. And this would create what may have been seen as a loophole, that if a document that otherwise would have been considered open was pulled into a deliberative process, that it could create a situation where an otherwise open record would be closed. And this was meaning to eliminate that. And that, that bill has, actually, has passed the Senate now, and appears headed to the governor's desk for a signature.
Robert, can you, pardon me. Is there an example of what that type of document might be?
That would be, if, if it's an open record, that would be anything with, from one of our offices, I will say, planning and zoning, something that normally would be open if it were brought into a specific, a more general document, brought into a specific discussion or debate, when maybe it would not necessarily have to come into that, that debate. That would potentially close that document that otherwise would be, would be open. I don't know if that's the best example for that, if, but that, that's the intent, that something that on its own would be open if it's brought in on a, something that could be a periphery issue, if it's brought into that discussion could potentially close it.
Adam Chair. Robert, if you could look into that a little further and let me know if I've ever seen that type of document.
I'll, I'll get a, I'll get a specific example.
Thank you.
Be happy to. I flipped through my iPad a little too fast here, and I think there was one other that I wanted to, a couple others I wanted to bring to you. Oh, there, we had a discussion a couple of weeks ago that there had been an effort to record minutes of legislative, of executive sessions. And that bill has, was deferred to the 41st day. Some concerns, a number of concerns expressed about that one. And I believe that was a West River attempt, introduced the bill in the beginning, but that one has been deferred. And then, the, the last one would just be a change that, as it is, once a year, you list a full payroll of county employees. And this would, would make a change that not only payroll, but benefits amounts would be listed, as well as any changes in, in benefits amounts through the year would be added. And there could be some significant costs to that, for printing costs and publication. That bill passed, has passed the Senate and has passed Senate, House, local government, and is on its way to the House floor.
Okay. What do you think the possibilities are in the House on that bill? Has there been any talk?
Well, that was considerably closer, coming out of House Local Government, 8 to 5. I haven't heard any leanings one way or the other, but we will certainly keep an eye on that one, and we can report back to you on that one next week.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Robert? Robert, were you finished?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, well, I guess we'll move on to commission liaison reports. Does anyone have anything to report this week? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. And we do have some new business. I think planning and zoning, no?
Yes.
Yeah, planning and zoning. Here comes Ken, too. So, planning and zoning.
I guess Ryan is here, too, but I'm in the room.
Okay. Whoever wants to speak on the subject.
We, Ken McFarland received a call from Don Serska. This is on the Big Sioux Rifle and Pistol Club item that is scheduled to come to Maine, or March 19th for a public hearing. It was announced at our Planning Commission meeting, and they were notified of that. He now has said he can't be there. He has asked for a deferral until the April 9th.
Could you just pick up?
Sorry. He's asked for a deferral to the April 9th meeting. We did contact the, the Maine opposition, and they are okay with that deferral. So, we were leaving that up to you because it was announced publicly. It was on March 19th.
So, we need a motion and a second to move that hearing to April 9th. Do I have a motion?
So, both.
And a second?
Second.
Jeff?
I just want to say that this issue has been deferred on the other, I mean, many times. This is at least the third time that, that this thing has been moved, whether it's in planning or zoning or in the county commission. And I, you know, but before we know it, they'll be trying to open for the year without us ever having decided.
Yeah, that's my question. When are they scheduled to open? Is it?
I guess we don't know their opening date. They have not provided their calendar to us, so.
Okay.
But we're getting there, I mean, you know, as soon as.
Are they under the, what did we do in the interim there? Are they under the old rules, or if they open on April 3rd?
Yes, they're still, yeah, they're still under the old rules.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second to defer until April 9th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 4 to 0. Any old business before the commission? Seeing no old business, we will go into executive session, kind of a motion for dismissal and for legal briefing.
That's my motion.
And that's my second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll adjourn again in about five minutes.